Hey, ¿qué pasa, Calexico? Welcome back to the podcast. Like always, before we begin, I want to thank a couple of people. First of all, I want to thank my friends here at Calexico Brewing Company for allowing me to record today's episode here. I really appreciate it, guys. I want to thank my sponsors: Camilo García, Jake, Eddie López from Roots Creative, Mesón Basera Galindo, IED Director representing Division 5 and serving the entire Imperial Valley, Valley Sports Network, your source for Imperial Valley sports, Sergio's Tacos and Hot Dogs, eight years of experience serving the Imperial, San Diego, Yuma County with Mexicali-style hot dogs and taquizas. Contact Sergio at 760-562-0057 or look for Sergio's Tacos and Hot Dogs on Facebook. I want to thank Eric Reyes from Los Amigos de la Comunidad, empowering communities together. Finally, I want to thank David Gassadum. If you're thinking of buying a home in Imperial or San Diego Counties, make sure you contact David. He's not only a Realtor but an investor with over 20 years of experience serving the Imperial and San Diego Counties. Thank you, David, for sponsoring the podcast. Today, my guest today is a Calexico native, Calexico graduate, Calexico High School graduate, and he's running for Imperial County Board of Supervisors. My guest today is Brian Favela Luna. Thank you for being here today.
Well, thank you so much for having me. It's quite a pleasure. I feel humbled because I have been a long time listener, first time.
Guest.
Guest, and I feel humbled to be noteworthy enough to be here.
No, no, thank you for, I really appreciate you taking the time and, you know, coming to the podcast and talking about your campaign. But before we get into your campaign, can you tell us a little bit about yourself?
Yeah, so my name is, as was mentioned, my name is Brian Jesús Favela Luna. I used to joke that I have two last names, so that's how you know I'm Mexican. I was born in Mexicali and I came to Calexico at the age of 11 with my family. We've been, you know, first generation, had to learn English, all that. I went to school here. I used to go to Main Street Elementary, a little bit of Kennedy Garden, and then De Anza Junior High when it was a junior high, and then the Ninth Grade Academy when it was a Ninth Grade Academy, and then Calexico High School. So I'm very, very proud of my roots and of being here. I wouldn't trade it for anything else because it's given me a very unique perspective. And so after high school, I had the pleasure and the opportunity to attend the University of California in Santa Barbara. There, I studied geography and earth science, so I'm very interested in a lot of what, you know, people and the earth and all those things, and also technology. So after graduating, I had the opportunity to intern with NASA at JPL, so the Jet Propulsion Laboratory in Pasadena. And there, I studied, well, we developed an algorithm that would allow us to image wetlands, which is a very, it's an ecosystem that is in a very precarious position all over the world because it has a lot of biodiversity, right? So we wanted to find an economical way to map it constantly. And one of the ways to do that was with radar imagery. And, but we needed to find an algorithm that would let us find, you know, the detection of it. So, so that's what I did there, and I'm very proud of my work there and how it has helped. You know, it might be a grain of sand, but it's, it's, it's helped nonetheless, right? It's something that's going to be, go on to be used by scientists and a lot of other people. Well, anyways, after that, I, I was in LA. I liked LA. A lot of things to do, you never run out, but, you know, my 20-minute commute was an hour each way. I didn't like that, and if I wanted to live closer to where I worked, I had to pay a lot of rent, right? So I didn't really enjoy that. I really longed for being back home, for bringing back some of those talents to do some good here. I know that a lot of people, young people, want that opportunity, right? So my experience was that there was nothing here relevant to what I did, or if there was. It was very low-paid, not a lot of job security. So the closest thing I could find was Yuma County, where I, I worked there for about a year and a half. I did a lot of good work there, learned a lot of things about county, county government. And then after that, through word of mouth, I found out about a position here in Imperial County for the GIS Project Coordinator. I applied and I had the privilege to get the job, and so I was able to finally come back home and bring back some of those talents that I learned for the benefit of the public, really.
Yeah, for sure. When you, when you worked in Yuma, did you commute back and forth or?
For a little bit, and then I found some housing over there, and so my housing situation wasn't too bad, but I did have to do a lot of commuting.
Okay, and, and what was your job at, what was it that you did at Yuma?
So in Yuma County, I was a GIS Analyst. So when it comes to GIS, I know a lot of people are not familiar with it at all, but it basically stands for Geographic Information Systems. And so if you think of Google Maps and all the information that is there from businesses to streets, addresses, all of that is not only a feature on the map, but it is also a database of information behind everything, right? So if you click on a business, you get all the information from phone numbers, websites, reviews. And that information links you to, like, the profiles of the people who reviewed and where they have reviewed. So it's a very interconnected system, right? On the surface, and then it tells you how to drive and where to get places, right? So think of that, but for the county. And to be more specific, think about the properties. So all the parcels in the county are not only lines that divide land, but there's a history to them. Sometimes parcels get divided when you make a subdivision, when you have a big parcel of land where then you now have development. So there's a history to them. Not only that, but every parcel has a lot of other information, such as who owns it. You know, is this entity a business? Is this doing business as something else? All those kinds of assigned addresses, taxabilities, zoning, land use. Is it in the cities? Is it not in the cities? Is it in an IED district? Is it not? So a lot of that information in the background is basically information management, right? In technology, so I do a lot of that. And as a project coordinator, I work with a lot of the cities, a lot of the regional entities, a lot of our partners, such as the IED, Caltrans, ICTC, LAFCO, even the Southern California Association of Governments. So I work with all of them to facilitate projects, right? Because sometimes the cities, they're small, and they don't have the budget to procure particular technologies, right? But we, as the county, as the big brother of sorts, we leverage our economies of scale, so we all come together and we all put a piece of the, we all put a little bit of money, you know, depending on how big we are, the IED. And then we procure these bigger projects. And just very briefly, one of those projects related to geographical, you know, space, has been aerial photography. And so what this entails basically is having an airplane or contracting a company to have an airplane take images of all over the county, right? And so this is for properties, roads, all kinds of things. And it gives you a bird's eye view of, of the county so that you can make decisions, so you can do planning, right? And so that you can do property assessment, those kinds of things. And it's a very expensive project, but when we all came together, I was able to facilitate the acquisition of that project and really, you know, look for those providers that would do it at a cost-effective manner and that would allow us to be like, well, the county's procuring it, but we want to share it with the, with the cities, we want to share it with the local agencies. Is this cool? You know, finding all those deals, and we were able to do things like that. So that's, that's, that's what I do in my job, just as an example.
Yeah, so how long have you been here in Imperial County?
Over two years.
And so, so you're running for Imperial County Board of Supervisors?
That's correct.
What, what made you decide to, because you're running against, you know, incumbent that's,
Yeah.
You know, yeah, a big name in the valley, and you're running against also somebody that's been, you know, in the political space for a while, you know, not, I don't want to question, but, yeah, I mean, he's been, he's been in the, in the realm for, for, for a long time and, and, you know, well, he might have followers that might, you know, what made you decide to, to, you know, run for?
Yeah, and I respect both of these gentlemen. I think they have very good intentions. But I, the reason is very independent of who I'm running against. It's for the office itself and for the people whom it serves. I've found that in my two years in the county, I've gotten to work with a lot of different departments, a lot of different cities. But just in the departments itself, in the county, I've seen a lot of deficiencies as far as technology. Things are done in a very outdated way. We don't have the systems as far as IT, this technology. We're catching up, but it's a slow pace, it's a slow march, and we're very far behind. So we really need to make bigger strides in that direction. And the fact that we're not equipped correctly hampers the ability of the county and the employees to serve the public at a capacity where they would want, right? So not only do we have understaffing in some areas, not only do we not have as many training opportunities for those employees, but sometimes they don't have all the tools that they need as far as technology. And this isn't about procuring big, expensive systems. Sometimes I would argue that there are some very small, you know, low-hanging fruits that are not as cost prohibitive, but that would increase the productivity of our employees, our departments, our ability to communicate with the public, for the public to communicate with us, to serve them. I noticed that the public has sometimes to go all the way to, you know, El Centro. And maybe they don't go to the right office, or they go to this office or that office. And then when they get to the right person, they find out that they're going to be back until Tuesday. And, you know, when you need something from the county, sometimes you need it today, you need it yesterday. So that can be very, you know, it's a problem. And it's disheartening sometimes as an employee, as a county employee, because you can't fulfill those needs and you really want to. So one of the things that has really pushed me is because I see a lot of these problems, a lot of these deficiencies, the need, but I don't see the will or even that, I don't know that in a lot of cases that they are aware at the leadership level, that these problems exist and that there are easy ways to fix them. And, and you could say, well, wouldn't it be easier for you to communicate with them and talk to them and let them know, hey, well, there are these problems? I want to bring this to your attention. Can we work with them? That is because unfortunately, and I don't want to be specific, but in a lot of cases, county employees are discouraged heavily against voicing needs, voicing concerns because it's seen as like jumping the chain of command.
Yeah.
And you have to walk on eggshells. You have to be reprimanded. Even something as asking questions like, why are we doing this in such an outdated way when we could even use like a Google spreadsheet, right? That will get you reprimanded. That will get you a warning. And you're putting your job in the line, and you're putting yourself in the doghouse where sometimes the people that are doing this hands-on with the public, they know it best what the solutions are, but there is that lack of communication. There's somewhat of a culture of silence, así están las cosas, o no le muevas. And we really need to get out of that because that is a toxic relationship between the leadership in the county and the employees who do this job, who answer the call of duty. So those are two very important areas that I want to address as a county supervisor.
Yeah, and you know, you mentioned the, you know, people saying, you know, you're, you're jumping the line of command or whatever, you know, and it's, I feel like it's, I don't know, everywhere, but, you know, at least in where I work, I feel the same way, like, you know, if I need something, sometimes I'll get, I'll, I'll ask and I don't get answers, so. So I'll, like I said, you go ask somebody else above them because, you know, you're not getting any answers. And, and yeah, they get, they get mad at you or, you know, you know, you get the, you get put in the blacklist.
Yeah.
And, and it's, you know, and, and for me, it's like, you know, I'm not doing it just to get you in trouble, I'm doing it because I want to fulfill my job
Right.
the best way I can, right?
Yeah.
And, and I feel like it's, it's, uh, I mean, I don't, because I only work where I work, but, but I feel like it's a county
Yeah.
wide thing, or like it's a common thing.
No, that's, that's definitely true, and, you know, as a supervisor, some people might say, well, you can't micromanage all these little things, right? And maybe you shouldn't, but the fact is that they exist in virtually all departments. As you said, this is across agencies, even across government bodies, so it's a systematic thing. You have to, you have to create systemic, you have to have a systematic approach to issues that are so widespread, right? So common, you can't, because the people at the top unfortunately only get the Cliff Notes, you know, the summary of this is what's going on, this is what's going on. But they don't, they're not familiar with the, what the employee is doing and what they need. Or, I mean, they might be aware that their, a particular department is understaffed, but they don't know all the issues that arise from that, you know, other people being overworked, demoralized, because again, they, they can't speak out, they can't say things. And then, así están las cosas, so they have to conform to things. And, but you have people, these county employees, I mean, I would say, all of them, maybe with some exceptions, they're very hardworking people who want to do right by the public, right? And the reason I say this is important for the public itself and the issues that I care about is because the county is limited in its ability to serve them. You know, this, as a county supervisor, you have to oversee how the services that we're providing the public are managed, right? And we're not leveraging technology in a lot of cases. We're doing things a very old way. I can tell you, and I don't want to be specific because I don't want to burn anybody or point out specific people at a risk that they might be reprimanded, but you have certain cases where information that is business critical or very important, it's not in a database. It's not in a Google spreadsheet or an Excel spreadsheet. It's on pen and paper, on a binder, somewhere. And so how can that be? You know, we're doing things the way they were done en el año del caldo, so way back before. Not even, yeah, not even by type, you know? And so how could those things persist through the decades, you know? When it's so important that we modernize, that we, you know, we're a fifth of the way into the 21st century, and we're still working as if we were in the 50s, 60s, 70s. But again, I want to stress that the employees are doing, they're working very hard, and they're making do even with these deficiencies, right? But imagine what they could do if we equipped them with the right technology, right? If we could facilitate collaboration between departments where sometimes you have sort of like, oh, don't give them that information or charge them for that information. But this is public information, and it's being used for the benefit and the improvement of the public and our services. But we have all this kind of, you know, these artificial barriers that we set up.
So what would you say to somebody that's, that would tell you, oh, there's bigger fish to fry than, you know, investing time and money into technology?
Well, to that, I would say, look at all the counties that surrounds us. Sure, San Diego, Riverside, you know, they have deeper pockets to approach us. But you have Yuma County, who is very similar to us, maybe slightly different economy, but virtually a sister community. And they have a lot of technology. They're leveraging it. And what do they have as a result? It's not only that they're able to better serve the public of the county, which is our very goal, our very mission, but for example, you have certain systems like the, the mapping that I was talking about with the Assessor's Office, the parcel lines. For example, knowing where all of your easements are as far as access, utilities, right-of-ways, you know, when, those kinds of things serve real estate development and investment in this county, in all counties, right? So when you have an investment from outside of the county, who wants to come here, you know, maybe they want to build something. They don't have access to any of that information, but if they, if they wanted to do it so in Yuma County, they have access to all of that, right? So they don't even have to call the Assessor's Office or the Planning Department or anybody. They, these are self-serve mechanisms, right? For, for people who have money and who want to put it in a community, we are really at a disadvantage because we can't offer that. So if somebody was interested, they would have to call, they would have to get a little bit of the roundabout perhaps, you know? Maybe there's no staff available to fulfill that request. And so I would argue that by not embracing those things, we are at a tremendous disadvantage economically. And, you know, we serve a very significant portion of our population who is very disadvantaged economically. And so to not provide them with the conveniences of technology, right? And to not provide our employees with the conveniences of having more productivity, we are really not serving the public as best as we can.
Yeah, and you mentioned, like, earlier you were mentioning about, you know, oh, you have to drive to El Centro. And a lot of people say like, oh, what do you mean, El Centro? It's only like 15 minutes away. But we have a lot of community that's, you know, low income, that might not have a car, that need to take the bus. You know, that's at least an hour back and, at least a couple hours back and forth, you know, going, so it's like.
And in the heat, right? So, so I have family members who are older and they don't drive anymore, you know? And so when they have to go to El Centro, it's not as easy as getting in your car and driving there and back, right? You have to get on a bus, go all the way over there, spend your whole day there. As an older person with limited mobility, you know, that can be a challenge. And even somebody who is young, who understands things and maybe has more, you know, they can get in a car and go on there and back, right? You have to take a day off of work or half a day off of work to go do something that's very simple, right? And so that puts, that's inconvenient. And that inconvenience affects, again, the, the ability for disadvantaged people to access those services, but even us, because we have to take time off of work.
It could, it could be, you know, money out of your pocket.
That's money out of your pocket, that's time off of work where, you know, maybe you're doing something important, you know?
Yeah, like, oh, you know, can you take care of, or an extra day of daycare because you have to go take care of this? Or, you know, ask somebody for a favor and, yeah, it's, uh, yeah, I think, you know, a lot of people, you know, when I, because to me, like, even though I have a car, to me, it's an inconvenience to, like, hardly go to El Centro or Raleigh or, you know? That's a kind of like a trip to me, because, you know, I'm a homebody, like, I like being here in Calexico. But yeah, like, if, and I was talking to you earlier that I need to get a couple of things from the county, and I'm like, I'm dreading it because I know that it'll probably be a day out of my, of my, you know, life or even like during lunch, have to rush over there and go get stuff or whatnot. But, but yeah, I mean, technology, you know, being, being in technology myself, you know, I kind of like feel that. Even, even if you, you know, no one, do you feel that, or is it in your mind that hopefully it brings attention to the topics that you're, you know? Being somebody that works in the county that knows the deficiency there is in terms of technology, do you hopefully think that, you know, this will be something that will, that will bring a bigger light to those issues?
Yeah, so I know that my campaign is a little, well, it's a long shot, definitely, because there are, there are people who have, who are well-established and who are well-known in the community. Nevertheless, I think, and I've seen a lot of people who I've talked to, because I do a lot of walking downtown, and the people that I talked to even when I was gathering signatures for my candidacy, they were very happy to see a young person. They were very happy to see somebody outside of the establishment who was hoping to bring change, right? And a lot of people, unfortunately, especially here in Calexico, they're very cynical about politicians because, you know, for better or worse, I don't, I don't know, maybe it doesn't apply to everybody, but they have seen corruption, they have seen, I don't know if negligence is the right word, but they're definitely a lack of interest in their issues, right? And, and so what I want to offer is not only shed light on these issues, which are very important because it affects our day-to-day lives or when we need a service, right? But if they continue to remain the same, if there is no change, we are gonna stay stagnant. We are not gonna, you know, move into the future. And, and like I said, this affects the employees for the county, this affects the public. And, I mean, I can't see how that's not important enough to, to really start working on that area, in those areas.
And have you gone the, or are you too young to be running for this position?
You know, surprisingly, most people are excited to see a young person. I have seen a few people who will say, oh, well, maybe you don't have the experience to do something like this. But I want to address that, and I want to say that you shouldn't. And maybe this is the way I see it. I don't, I don't think anybody has a definition for it, but you really shouldn't have to be well-connected or have all these years of political experience of being a politician. You shouldn't have to have all this money, you know, be well-off person, or have all this financial backing or a particular last name to run for office, to be part of the democracy at that level. Because sure, experience, I don't want to discount it, it counts for a lot. But nevertheless, when you only have people from the system, you know, from the top of our socioeconomic strata here in the county, you, you really have something more akin to an oligarchy, you know, where the regular people, they don't have much of a say, they show up here and there, but it's the people at the top who are making the decisions for everybody. And so I think it's important that we have a well-diverse body of individuals who represent us because they have different perspectives, right? A younger person, as a younger person, I can say, I've grown up with technology. And I don't, again, I don't want to demean anybody, but sometimes older, they're not as familiar, right? And they, they may not know not only like consumer-level technology, but at the enterprise level and how important those systems are. Because nowadays, everybody has a supercomputer in their pocket, right? So can we leverage that more? Can we make it convenient? I know for a fact that I like not having to call the pizza place and being able to order a pizza, right? So I don't want to simplify it as much as that, but why can't we do that for a lot of our public services and a lot of that? And giving people access to the information, to the documents, to the services that they need with a lot more convenience, because not only would that save them time, and not only are we making those services more accessible, but it's really empowering also our employees to, you know, instead of being on the phone, they can do county business, you know? They're still available, of course, when somebody needs something, but, but really making our, our government body more efficient in their duties, right? If, if that's not serving the public at a greater capacity, and then I don't know what is. And so I think, like I said, you really, you really need people with more diverse backgrounds, with more diverse understanding and different perspectives of things. I think that, you know, again, even if I, when, when I'm there in the, in the office of supervisor, I'm only one vote. But nevertheless, there are a lot of conversations to be had there, right? Where you can really push for change in a lot of areas.
And, you know, we've been talking about technology, you know, most of, but, you know, there's a lot of other, you know,
Correct.
issues that, you know, a county board supervisor is
That's right.
you know, dealing with, you know, how do you, how are you educating yourself in, in terms of what's going on in the valley to kind of like, if you do get elected, you know, to be in the up and up of what's going, you know, what's going on in the valley?
Right, so I, I try to educate myself a lot. I know that, I'll give you an example, and this is something very simple, but still very educational. I, I listen to some of the NPR podcasts that have been done about renewable energy and lithium, especially here in the valley, and they interviewed a lot of local people. And you really get an understanding of how those issues work, right? And so I'm educating myself on, on what's going on, what are the issues that are affecting us most? Where the Salton Sea, you know, there's lithium and employment and all these different things. I can tell you that, you know, some people might say, well, this guy's out of the blue, he's, you know, he's a regular, you know, but I'm a regular person. So when this pandemic started and even beforehand, I used to commute to Mexicali, not to live, but, you know, for family, for doctor's appointments, for things like that. And so there's a lot of issues that affect a little person way beforehand, before the people at the top find out, you know, before they are affected, you know? There's a saying in Spanish, dice cuando nosotros, cuando los da gripa, los arriba nosotros ya nos dio bronquitas. You know, so sometimes issues go for a long time before there's something done about it. And, and so I think, I want to be a lot more responsive to issues that affect Calexico, for example. I've talked to people, and I won't say names, but people in public works who say, well, if we only got a little bit more help, for example, with the, the county, for example, lending us or making it accessible to have some of the machinery, we could fix the roads a lot better instead of just patching them up with a little bit of chapapote. And so, and so those are the things that, of course, I mean, they're, they're big issues, they're complex. But, and there's another saying, más hace el que quiere que el que puede. So if, if they're so well, you really can start to address a lot of those little issues that, I mean, they're simple, and sometimes they're a lot more complex, but they affect our lives in huge ways, right, or standard of living. So a lot of people working here, but they live in Mexicali, and those commutes that they were making were, were pretty bad, pretty life-affecting. But how long did it take us or, or government representatives to do something about it? It took them a year and a half, perhaps more, to write a letter. And so I think, you know, I was pretty pissed off when I had to make five hours to, to leave to Mexicali so that the next day I could go to the doctor. And so again, very complex issues, there's no silver bullet, but why, we need to be more reactive on a lot of those things. And so again, I'm very, I try to be involved. I work with a lot of different departments in my job. So I know a lot about these issues such as COVID. I can tell you that I was, I was working with public health, with some individuals in public health. We created the COVID dashboard, the, at the county. So I'm well-informed on a lot of the issues that are going on. You can't know everything, of course. But this is why I think it's very important that the people at the top meet with the people at the bottom. So if you are a county supervisor, you can't micromanage everything, but you definitely can meet with those employees and find out, hey, well, you know, what's going on with this? How can we improve this area? And I think that involvement, you, because you can't know everything, you can't be the best at everything. But a lot of people in the community, you know, you can meet with them and they'll tell you about the issues, and they'll give you a very good summary of those things. So I intend to be involved at that level with our employees, with the people in the community. I think that's a way that, that you can be a very good representative in the team.
Do you know how it would affect your job, like, if you get, if you get elected, you have to?
You know, that, that has been a concern for me, but I, I definitely need to do more research in that aspect. I know that there are other counties here in California where you have undersheriffs and people in other departments who serve as board supervisors as well. And people have brought the issue, well, isn't that a conflict of interest? But I have done a lot of research and you can make decisions as an elective official, whether that's for a school board or a utility district or something like that, that affect even something like your salary, you know, if you work for that utility district. So I need to do more research about that, but if I was to get elected, I would definitely take the, take the position, you know, that I was elected to do, if that means leaving my job.
Yeah, and, you know, going back to experience, you know, you're jumping to this, you know,
Yeah.
position where, you know, board supervisors is, a lot of people start at school board or city council. But, you know, I mean, you're, you had, we're talking with Lava right now, and you're in ASB, that's so kind of like a bit of, 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 uh, public office, office experience.
Yeah, so, so when, as I mentioned from the beginning, I came in here, I didn't know English, and so that kind of precludes you a little bit from socializing sometimes. Although everybody speaks, well, just about everybody speaks Spanish, and I was kind of shy. Shy, but I've grown out of my shell since then, and I was involved in student government, which may not prepare you for the job of supervisor, of course, but it shows interest, right? It shows interest in that you're worried about what decisions are being made and how they affect people. And so I was involved in that. After that, I got out of being in ASB and being sophomore class president, and I decided to create my own club. Now, the reason for that is that I saw that in the high school, there's a lot of, and probably all schools, there's a lot of kids who come in here who are new, you know, first generation, or maybe they live in Mexicali, and they just come in back and forth, and they're not as engaged, right? And so I created a club for a lot of these kids who were interested in careers in healthcare, perhaps. It was called And so I created a club for a lot of these kids who were interested in careers in healthcare, perhaps. It was called, it's HOSA, uh, Health and Behavioral Students of America. So we created a chapter and I decided to approach a lot of those kids who, you know, maybe they were like, yeah, I mean, I'm interested, but I don't know, I don't fit in. Hey, no, you fit in here, come in. Uh, we want, we want your talents, we want you to get involved and and we did a lot of things. We were able to go on trips to Sacramento, to Anaheim, field trips and have them participate in competitions. So I've always had a concern for people who may not feel like they're part of the system of. Of, you know, they don't have a say, they can't participate. And so I've been, always been involved in that and we had a lot of success. We we grew the club to a lot of members, like I said, we we went to a lot of um. Places, field trips, right? That's something that kind of opens your mind. And then, so I've always been involved like that and and I want to speak a little bit, you know, talking about some of these people who are. Barely becoming part of our community here in Callexico, for first generation. Um, we have a lot of people here in Callexico who fall through the cracks of the system. Maybe they're green card holders, maybe they're work. You know, they just have work permits, but they're as part of this community as anybody, if you have been here five generation or if you're the first generation, I think. Um, you're part of this community, because I meet business owners, like I said, I walk downtown a lot, I talk to them. Um, they they say, well, I can't vote for you, I can't sign your petition, but if you need anything, let me know. Um, so they have skin in the game even, right? Um, and you have folks who can no longer afford rent here, maybe they lose their job here. And in a certain essence, they're being gentrified out of their their community, their city. And they have to go live in Mexicali, or in a lot of cases, sometimes they live on the streets. And that's very unfortunate.
And later Friday and then weekends they go to Mexicali just to not make that.
Not make that line, right? And 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 so that's very unfortunate that these people fall through these cracks and a lot of cases, they feel like they can't participate or that their voice is not important or it can't be heard. Um, and as a board supervisor, I also want to address some of those areas, right? I can't do it alone and I certainly, we have to work with the city and perhaps a lot of other agencies, but we need more housing here in the city. We definitely do because rents are very high. A lot of people can't afford to live here and they have, they have lived here for a long time.
I mean, even for, I I've seen studios that are going up for like eight hundred, nine hundred dollars now for a studio, like. Bedroom and bathroom, it's like, wow, like, it's, it's getting, it's getting pricey to be in Callexico.
It's getting very pricey and and so like I was saying, some of, a lot of people say, well. But then, you you know, that is not solved like they, oh, they left, okay, because they still have to, you know, their kids come to school here, they work here. So they still have to commute back and forth. And so these lines. That issue that they had with housing, it's now converted into a, an issue with congestion, right? And things like that, um, or perhaps when they live on the street, you know, homelessness and that has a cost for the taxpayer. So um, there are issues that Callexico has that can be. That can have a stronger possibility of being resolved if we work at the regional level. Right? If we can engage a lot of other people. I know, for example, and I'll give you an example. Uh, of a gentleman, a local gentleman who wanted to build sort of like a low cost boarding or homeless shelter. Um, but. And he talked to a lot of the people on the street and said, hey, would you be interested in paying five, ten dollars a night to have a bed? To have a place to shower, to be away from the heat or the cold, and they say, yeah, where is this place, right? Um, but when he approached the city, and and this is another issue, not county related, they wanted just. A significant sum of money just to listen to his proposal. And he didn't want to handout, he didn't want government money, he had a lot of private backing to do this project, but they, there were a lot of roadblocks that are very artificial. Um, and you have somebody, you have a lot of people who want to solve issues here, right? And so we we really need to um kind of work with them, engage them and not say like, well, you know, you need to pay to be heard here or something. Of course, this is a side of the story, so I understand there may be other issues. Um, but nevertheless, there's the will, just people are just not finding the way.
Hmm, yeah, and and, yeah, and and you know, a lot of the issues that. Um, you know, a city that are in the city, like, you know, going back to technology. You know, hope, hope, hoping that, you know, the the county, you know, gets up to date with their technology. Kind trickles down to the cities because, I mean, e- even for, you know, cities, you know, we're way behind when it comes to technology. I mean, you look at our, our city council meetings and sometimes like, you know, the video or the audio is like, it's like, oh my god. Um, so like little things like that that would make, maybe a lot of people view it. If they want to, you know, join in that, in that perspective, you know, through through their streams. Or even go to the meetings or be a little bit more, or or access the information that they want, you know, through technology, like you said, at the county, so. Yeah, you know, hopefully that, you know, when things get modernized at the county, it trickles down to to the cities as well.
Yeah, most definitely. And and I don't know if, because I were speaking a little bit about this and I don't know if it was in the air, so I don't want to be too repetitive. But the the county is in a lot of ways sort of like a big brother to a lot of the cities, to a lot of the smaller agencies. And where we go, sometimes they get that benefit of that, right? Um, so this project that I was talking about, aerial imagery. The the cities now have access to it. Those who chose to participate now have access to this technology where. You know, this is a project of many hundreds of thousands of dollars or at least dozens of thousands of dollars, they got it for, you know, five thousand dollars, six thousand dollars, eight thousand dollars, so. These big projects that are very costly, that can be cost prohibitive, um, are made available to the cities because the county is taking the leadership to do them, right? And if we modernize, if we can have systems um that can be integrated with the city, where we can share data, where we can make a lot of that available to them. Even the cities benefit and they benefit greatly from that.
Yeah, yeah. So we're almost at forty minutes. If you had to give me your two minute pitch, elevator pitch, what what would it be?
Huh, I don't have anything can to give out, but I would say that. Um, don't discount, you know, a lot of, a lot of times people say, well, young people should be more involved, they should step up, you know, we want to mentor them. Um, but a lot of times you find that people are very dismissive, when you're young, when you don't have all the experience. Um, but a lot of other people say, hey, I'm so happy that a young person stepping up, I'm so happy that that's, that's happening because. Um, you know, sometimes we keep electing the same people and we could keep expecting different results. And so what I want to say is that if if you want somebody who is going to have a different approach, a new approach. A better understanding of of how, how we can resolve all the deficiencies through modernizing because. Unfortunately, we're so far behind that even small strides can make a huge difference, right? So I'm that person, I I really, despite my lack of political experience, you know, I will make a part of the county board supervisor, not the whole. So a lot of the experience that my other peers have can be combined with a new perspective of how we can approach these issues, how we can modernize, how we can equip. The county and and, you know, by consequence, the cities um to better serve the public because we're really missing out, we're really falling behind, we're staying stagnant. And we want out of that stagnation, but we keep doing things the same way over and over and over again. So I I really want to stress that, um, you know, if you want to see something different, if you are a little bit cynical perhaps, to say, ah, well, some of me was. You know, I invite you to vote for me and I invite you to be part of something new, something different.
Okay, um, where can people follow you to, you know, follow your campaign or or do you have a?
I have, I have presence in Facebook and Instagram. I don't have like a very sanitized, clear, you know, with a nice shirt and all. You can go to my Facebook, you can go to my Instagram, you'll see who I am as a person, uncurated. Um, so just look up Bryant, that's B R I A N T. Pretty unique names and not a lot of other, you know, Fabela, F A B S M boy, E L A, and you will most likely find me. Add me, you can message me through there, you can get in contact with me. I am very responsive, right? I try to my best. Um, and you can follow me there and again, if you want to get in contact with me, that would be the best way.
Okay, and and um, if you give me like, I don't know if you have like an email or something where people can, I'll put it on the, on the show description and people can.
Can email me? Of course, so my email is my first name and last name, so that's B R I A N T. Fabela with B S M boy, F A B E L A at gmail dot com. That's how you can reach me through email.
Okay, and and I'll, like I said, I'll put all that in in the description of the show and so people can reach out if if they have any questions or. You know, want to talk to you, make sure that you're their candidate.
Yeah, of course. And like I said, I know this is a long shot. If I don't win, I at least want to bring out to light, shed some light on the fact that we are behind in a lot of areas and that's not receiving a lot of attention. And that is coming to really affect us, you know, because we're not getting what we could be getting, we're, we're not where we could be, you know? Um, and so that's really the message that I want to leave.
Yeah, and and as a, as a tech, you know, as a nerd, um, you know, I I I understand, you know, where you're coming from. Um, so yeah, I mean, it's really important, like you said, like hopefully, if 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 you don't get the position, hopefully, you know, like I said, it's. It sheds some light on 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 the issues and and it gets addressed, you know?
Yeah, and if 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 I'm not the winner of this race, I invite whomever is to approach me. I would be more than happy to. Uh, give my concerns to you, um, and so that way we can address them, you know, if you're interested in in change in this regard.
Yeah, for sure. All right, Brian, well, thank you again for for taking the time today and and, you know, being on the podcast and sharing. Your, you know, your campaign information, your story, and and I really, really appreciate it and and good luck on the, on the campaign.
Thank you, it's my pleasure to be here.
All right, all right. All right, guys, well, thank you so much for listening or watching and we'll see you guys in the next one.